Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Gos.
Here.
Mayor Protem Arismendi.
Here.
Councilmember Capocha.
Here.
Councilmember Delmar.
Here.
And Councilmember Harbidian.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Councilmember Delmar will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
I'll rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So tonight, I would like to support our police officers and our fellow citizens in Orlando and have a moment of silence for the violence that they've encountered in the last couple days and send positive thoughts to the city and the people we cover. Thank you.
Madam City Attorney, would you please report out a closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session this evening with legal counsel to receive a briefing on a matter of existing litigation, CETT versus City of Sierra Madre at all. This was a briefing only. No action was taken, but direction was provided. Oh, and I frequently forget to mention, thank you for the reminder, that Mayor Protem Arismendi did not participate in that closed session. She has consistently recused herself from anything having to do with the property, given that she has property within 500 feet, so she did not participate.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's have a look at our agenda, and I'm looking for a motion for approval or amendment.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have an agenda, and I think we'll be waiting for minutes in the next meeting. Mayor and City Council reports, who would like to go first?
I'll go first. I did attend the San Gabriel Cog Water Committee, and Maggie Clark, a council member from Rosemead, had mentioned that she had watched a webcast of the legislative briefing on stormwater, and there was just some really interesting comments from the attorney for the State Water Board. And he is of the belief that, as a result of the ruling, the Supreme Court ruling on mandates, that we may not be able to maintain our own program anymore, because basically it suggests that perhaps everything is a mandate. And also, the EPA is very concerned about that, and they've asked the State Water Board within 90 days to file a report on how we're going to deal with the mandates problem. So I thought that was really interesting. And it was, you know, really just a big eye-opener, because I watched it myself afterwards, and it was just shocking to hear him make these statements, and he is the attorney for the State Water Board. So I viewed this as a really, really positive, you know, turn of events, but we'll have to see what the response of the State Water Board to the EPA is and see how they feel about it, too. But perhaps there is an opportunity, maybe, that, you know, all this ruckus is going to result in some type of a legislative fix, either at the federal level or at the state level. And it's just interesting, I don't know who it was, but I was watching the Sessions, you know, Senator Sessions hearing for Attorney General today, and I don't know which senator was talking, but he mentioned even that problem of how waters of the U.S. are defined as being a real problem. It just came out of nowhere, and, you know, I was trying to figure out who he was, I don't know who it was, but it's in the record somewhere, so I thought that was really good. So, anyway, that's my report.
I'll go next. Happy New Year, everyone. Hope everyone enjoyed a wonderful holiday. I don't have a report, but I just want to say I look forward to our presentation to our Sierra Madre Rose Float Association at the next meeting for their 11th award, or 11th trophy of the last 12 years, so look forward to that.
And I can just piggyback on that. I got to bring my granddaughters down to Kirsten Port when they were reeling the float out, and they just had the best time. They got to see it up close and get pictures, and a lot of people came down to see that, and like my daughter said, this is just an amazing little town, that she just thought, you know, we would just go down and see it, and she's like, there's all these people here.
Yeah.
So it was a fun evening, and the float was just darling. It was just so cute, and so kudos to them, and Happy New Year, everybody.
Agreed. No formal report, Happy New Year to everyone, and it was, it's always a highlight of my year to watch the float on TV, and the float this year was really just phenomenal, and fitting that it was the mayor's trophy again. We seem to get the mayor's trophy a lot, and just congrats to the group of volunteers that do it every year. It's really a source of pride for the city. So Happy New Year and congrats again.
Yeah, I'll just add my voice to that. Congratulations to our Rose Float Association. They just keep pulling it off year after year after year, and we kind of take it for granted, but it's crazy. I think it's, we're down to like six, now, six associations that are nonprofit or not run by for-profit organizations, so we're competing with all these far better funded corporate enterprises, and we're just right in there every year, so kudos. Okay, let's move on to Mayor, or pardon me, public comment on non-agenda items.
Good evening and Happy New Year to you all. Glad to see you. It's that time again, February 17th, so put that on your calendar, is the 47th Wine and Cuisine Tasting for the Friends of the Library. Hope you all plan to come. It's been in the works since, this year has been planned since August, so it's just going to be a wonderful time. The premiere event is still $80, and it starts at 6:00, and we're going to have some very, very special wines for you and some really good hors d'oeuvres. The main event is at 7:00, and already, we've had several wineries sign up, so it's just going to be a really great event. And I have tickets tonight, and as you know, the premiere event always sells out, so if you're interested, either let me know, and I'll write your name on the tickets, or, okay, thank you for chill, and I will save them for you, and we'll all be here next council meeting, too, to help out. And anybody that's watching, you can get tickets at the bottle shop, at Save With the Flavor, at the library, and other places in town, I remember.
Arnold's. Arnold's.
Arnold's, yes. Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. Can you hold two for me, too, the premier? Thank you. Other public comment on non-agenda items? Okay, that does it. Now, we have a presentation from our Senior Community Commission.
The Senior Commission is here tonight to present a plaque commemorating completion of the Hart Park House Storage Edition. Completed in the spring of this last year, the storage edition is the culmination of several years of work, planning, and commitment by many individuals for the benefit of all of our community. The new addition has allowed greater flexibility of the limited space in the Hart Park House, which leads to more opportunity for programs and services. The plaque is dedicated to the senior commissioners that brought this project to completion and will be installed at the entry to the storage unit inside the Hart Park House. Joanne Williams, current chair of the Senior Commission, will be giving the plaque.
I certainly will, and you want to know.
Isn't this beautiful?
It is. It is.
Yes.
And it's always possible, because, number one, I was not involved. This took patience, it took determination, and a true focus on something that the city needed. You know, there are so many meetings that go on at that Hart Park House, and they all bring their stuff with them. Now we've got a place for them. So I would like to honor some of the members who are here today, so would you all come up here, please? Oh, you look beautiful, you're wearing a red sweater.
Where do you want it?
I just came from work.
Brian will get the picture.
I'm going to do the picture.
Now you're presenting it.
I did not help you. Okay, here's what it says. Dedication of the Hart Park House Storage Edition, completed on March 31st, 2016, funded by the Senior Community Commission. And at that time, Amy Putnam was chair, Jackie Percola was vice chair, and the following commissioners were a part of this endeavor also. Nana Bartoli, Frances Garbaño, who is not here this evening, Dorothy Jersey, if I'm not wrong, Marilyn McKernan, and Joan Spears. Here she is, right here. Aren't they wonderful?
Yeah.
Now, everybody who comes to the Hart Park House and wants to get into the storage, I don't want to be in this picture. They will pause and see this forever and know who did all the work. So thank you, ladies. Are you taking pictures?
I'm taking a picture. You can't get out of this.
Whether you like it or not.
And one, two, and three.
Nice.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Yes.
Take a just a quick moment.
Please.
Yeah, I just, I just want to point out that all this process, while this was going on to develop that, was a little stressful at times, and I know there were people that were mad about it and felt it wasn't moving along quick enough, but, you know, sometimes if you, if you want it bad, you get it bad, and if you're patient, you get it really good, and I think you guys got it really good. And again, just to point out that this all came from senior funds that are raised by the seniors, and so I consider that that is a donation, again, like you say, for the greater good of the community, and it came out really well. It's like historically fits the building very well, and I'm just really proud of what you were able to achieve, so thank you.
You're here. Yes. Okay, so I think we'll move on to the consent calendar now.
Mayor, Member of City Council, there are two consent calendar items this evening. The first one is item A, its adoption of Resolution 1701, approving the city's demands. Option B, or I should say, item B, is consideration of Resolution 1702, adopting Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Compliance Program for Transportation Services, and approval of the city's first update report. It's recommended that the city council approve the resolution and allow us to file that report. This report is necessary so we can continue to receive our transportation funds. Just one quick, attachment C, which is the actual program update report, there was a typo on, it's a minor typo, page two, in the introduction section, the general fund budget amount was left blank, so we'll be inserting 9.5 million into, reflecting what the general fund budget is on the first paragraph of the introduction. That's the only change. Staff recommends approval of this, and that concludes our report. We'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, questions on the consent calendar?
No questions.
Hearing none, we'll open this to public comment. I don't think we're going to have any takers. We'll bring it back to the council.
Well, I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
One second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead.
The second whereas of the Resolution for Title VI program just should be FTA and not FTS, so.
Right, I forgot this. We'll correct that typo, too.
But with that, I think everything else is good.
Right. Okay, that motion passed. And we move to our first item for discussion, which is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We do have our Director of Library and Community Services back up again to show the council some, a new sign for City Hall and the Public Safety Building. There's just a few slides, Mr. Mayor.
They're in your attachment also, the life signs. They are here. So these are the sign options that we have for the City Hall and Police and Fire Building. These were included as part of the Civic Center landscaping project, and they are being paid for out of the donation for that project, so there is no expenditure from City, from general fund at this point, right? So this is already the budget, it's already in. The Commission, Community Services Commission, selected one option, which is option number two, which I'll show you in a second, but I'm going to show you all three options, and just have to confer which you like the best. So that is option number one, so much will be there. Option two, where are you, option two? Technical support.
There goes technical support.
Okay, all right. So there is option number one. Option number two, option number two is the pick of the Community Services Commission. And option number three, which kind of combines option one and two there. And that's what they look like all compared, and that's my presentation. May you choose what you like. Or if you have any questions. You said the community liked option two? Yes, option two, with the mountains peeking out of the top of the sign, the kind of three-dimensional top there. That was the pick of the Community Services Commission.
I think that was our shortest PowerPoint presentation since I've been on the council.
All right.
Much appreciated.
Shooting for a record.
Same price for all three signs, right? They're all.
Yes, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, let's get public comment on this item. I think all the public comment must have happened in the Community Services Commission, so we'll bring it back to council. What's your pleasure, folks?
I'd like to support what Community Services Commission chose, and I like the option myself.
I think they have really good taste.
I agree.
Sounds good.
That's unanimous. Do we need to vote?
Nope, that is fine.
Yeah, they did a good job.
And Director Ryan, about how soon till we'll see the new signs?
Oh, I'll confer with Public Works, who's shaking his head and says he doesn't have answers.
Okay, we'll put it, we'll put it in a future city manager's report, so the public will know when to look for our new signs. Thank you.
Right, this has already been, we already have all the specs and everything, so I assume at this point it's just a matter of putting the order in.
Okay.
Director Ryan, quick question. Was there color to that? Was it the color on that last, on the slide?
Oh, I can bring that back.
I just didn't note it. I just didn't note it.
Yes, there's color in the logo. The letters are sort of goldish.
Yeah, it's kind of, kind of a goldish, and then we have the area, and then our, our green trees there, so, yeah. So, it should stand up very nicely.
Thanks.
Okay, that brings us to, boy, we're just going right through this agenda, aren't we? Review for the penalty for excessive water consumption.
We have interim Public Works Director Jose Reynoso with the staff presentation on this.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. This is a review of penalties for excessive water consumption. Sierra Madre has implemented a number of water conservation measures to respond to the prolonged drought and the decline in the East Raven Basin. Despite implementing water conservation targets and other water conservation measures, the city has not been able to consistently reach the overall conservation goal of 30% or more. Despite of recent rain, Sierra Madre remains in severe drought. Water levels in the Aquifer Service Sierra Madre remain very low, so low that the adjudicated rights have been restricted from 1,764 acre-feet per year to 940 acre-feet per year. The pumping restriction will remain in place so long as the aquifer remains below 500 feet mean sea level. Current water levels in the aquifer have slowly recovered, however, remain below 500 feet at 380 feet mean sea level. To meet the city's annual demand of approximately 2,100 acre-feet, the city supplements its supply of water with water purchased from the San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District. At $330 per acre-foot, the cost of purchasing imported water is more than three times the cost of producing its adjudicated rights. Faced with these challenges, on May of, on May 10 of 2016, city council adopted resolution number 16-23, which increases the penalty rate for water use in excess of a customer's conservation target to two times Tier Four or $10.72 per billing unit. City Council requested a periodic review of this conservation strategy to determine the effectiveness of the program. So, what I did is I took the last, the last four months from September to December and compared 2016 to 2015 and the percentage of residents that went, or the percentage of accounts that went over the conservation target. What I found was that in September 2016 compared to September of 2015, there was a 4% increase in the number of accounts that went over the conservation target. In October compared to October of 2015, that number went up to 19%. For November 2016 compared to November 2015, it dropped to 10%. And then in December 2016 compared to December 2015, there was an increase of 1%. So, I also took a look at other factors such as rainfall to see if that had an impact on how our residents were using water. And with the exception of December 2016, where we had 4.6 inches of rain, there really wasn't a significant amount of rain in the previous year to, to note for the increase in 2016. So, each water billing account has now received two billing cycles with increased penalties. And while the increased penalties may not seem to be having the intended impact of encouraging increased conservation, staff still feels that it's a little too early to determine if, if the penalties are making an impact. Staff recommends that the, that City Council request another update in four to six months. And it should be noted that the council recently approved the implementation of an AMI program that will be unveiled soon, and we feel that reaching those 200 accounts is going to have a positive impact on water conservation. Staff recommends that City Council receive and file, and direct staff to return in four to six months with another update, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
A question, we're, we're looking forward here in, on our agendas in March. One of our agendas, I think, we're going to be looking at the Water Master Plan, and I'm wanting to make certain that this discussion folds into that discussion, because I think they're, they're, they're related in as much as we're trying to get control of the leakage in our water system that's not customer-based leakage. You know, I would like to see those two discussions merged. Do you have any comments about that, or do, will we be able to do that? Will we have enough data for that, or is that too soon? Because you're saying four to six months out, and that's before four to six months.
One of the things that we, we started about a month ago, if you recall, about a year ago, staff approved the purchase of an acoustic listening device so that we can listen to mains to determine where we had leaks. So, we started on the east section of town, south of Sierra Madre Boulevard, and worked our way all the way to Mitchelinda. We actually found, I believe it was seven leaks that had not surfaced. So, we repaired those leaks, and we, we started working north of the boulevard and making our way back east, and we found another five leaks. So, and we're repairing those as we go along, and these are leaks that have not surfaced. So, we're already in the process of getting to that point. In addition, the water model, which is moving along really well, I spoke to them today and gave them the last updates to our system so they can move forward. The next phase is to do some hydrant testing to see how the model's working. That's also going to help determine where we have problems and how we can address them.
Okay, thank you.
interim Director Reynos, thank you so much for the presentation, and, and I appreciate it because we did ask for an update as to, you know, how, what the effectiveness is, but I, I agree, this is too early. But I'm just curious, have we heard any feedback from residents, customers? Have there been any concerns? Anybody outraged? Are they surprised? What's, what's the sense that we're getting out from the public there?
I, we have had a couple of, we've, I've had a couple of residents that have called me outraged by the bill, and we've been able to go and identify problems, explain to them how critical the situation is in Sierra Madre. It's, it's like a microclimate, you know, just in spite of what's happening in the rest of the state, Sierra Madre has one source of water, and, and right now, that one source of water has been restricted. And the cost of importing that water and producing that water is really, really expensive. So, we get that message across. A couple of the customers, we offered the, the AMI register, we've been able to install a couple, and, and that kind of helps at least give the residents peace of mind that they'll be able to make sure that, that high bill never happens for them again.
Thank you.
I have a question. It's with regard to the rainfall totals, I mean, how, how does that correlate? Because, I mean, this, the data that you've got for consumption is from billing data, right?
Correct.
Which is a two-month period, so if it rains in, you know, we got good rain in December, you're not going to see the effect of that on somebody's bill until as far as two months out, so.
Correct.
Right, so for October, if you look at September and October, were really low rainfall compared to last year, and after a hot summer, everything's really dried out. So, I'm not really that surprised that we haven't had a big, you know, that the December and November results look better because, you know, that just, the demand is just, people are just afraid of losing their landscaping.
Right.
So, in, in that regard, I agree. It's just wait a while and see. And now, we're going to have the opposite effect, that we've been wet for a month, and there should be no landscape watering at all, hopefully. And then it's going to look like, wow, the penalties did really good. So, it's, it's hard to separate out, so I think we just need to wait. And I think just keeping the penalties where they are too just sends the message that it is serious, so when you get the complaints, you've got something to, you know, talk about.
I think our parks are a perfect example. I think the irrigation has been off for at least a month, and the parks are lush, they're, they're green, so.
Yeah.
Staff met with, and it's something we'll bring back at a later date when we do talk about whether or not we need to do more. It may be time, staff is doing everything we can to get the measure out. It's on your water bills. We had, you know, banners overballed when we've done the other banners. Almost everything we send out talks about the importance of conserving water, but the message still isn't, the, the importance of it. Jose was telling me about someone who contacted him recently who didn't understand why all the other cities are getting rid of their
Yeah.
conservation targets, and we're still doing it, had no idea of the
Yeah.
microclimate we have here that we're so dependent on this one source of water. So, we did interview with a, a firm, you know, those, these PR firms. It was a very reasonable proposal. It's something that we're currently looking at. We just got the proposal. It may be time to bring in some professional messaging. We're not saying to do it now, but we may be getting to that point, because I think it, it's a little bit of burnout with our messaging we've been doing.
Yeah.
That it might take a new, fresh look at how to get this information out so everyone understands why it's so important to conserve.
Yeah.
There's just a lot, which we'll get into more details later, there's just a lot of long-term consequences if we can't get a handle on becoming self-sufficient on our own water source again. So, it's something we'll be, at a future date, just plant the seed, the idea, that, that may be one of the things we need to do, is get some professional messaging.
Other questions?
So, I, I think my question is, when the people have that, the penalty, and they call and you help, you know, solve their problems, do you see in the next billing cycle that have anybody improved?
The, the ones that come to us have a big concern. We do see
Yes, we do.
We do see a change in, in modified behavior, yes, in consumption.
But, well, who we need to reach are those 200, more or less, people who don't reach out to us, don't complain, just pay these penalties. We don't hear from them, and month after month, they're consistent.
Yeah.
Those are the ones we need to figure out how to reach. But the ones that reach out to us and express a concern over the penalties, I agree, we do see a, an improvement on their next bill.
Because I did have a problem, and the AMI picked it up, and we got it solved, and no further problems, but we, I would have no idea that that was happening. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's
Thank you for your customer service. I really appreciate that.
Right.
And open this up to public comment. Yeah, I think we're going to come up empty. I'll bring it back to the council. So, our, what are you looking for tonight? Just receiving file?
There's no action. This is a receiving file. There's no council action necessary at this point. We just think it's important to keep the, keep the word out.
Yeah.
You know, we have a lot of people who watch our council meetings just to remind them how important it is.
Yeah, hopefully the rain keeps, you know, falling. I haven't had my sprinklers on in about a month, so I'm guessing I'm not the only one. So, probably conserving water right now. We don't know it. So, which brings us to our last item, which is the SB 415 issue regarding elections, consolidating elections.
Mayor, members of the city council, I have this staff report. The city attorney's also here for any questions you may have. Basically, in September, very recently, September of, I think it was 2016, I think I have a typo. It was September 2016. It was very recent. Governor Brown signed into law Senate Bill 415, which required local governments to look, if you didn't, if a local government had an election that wasn't on a statewide ballot, the cities were required to look at their voter turnout. Sierra Madre is one of those cities. It's here where our municipal elections occur in April of even-numbered years. The statewide is November and June of even-numbered years, so we're one of those off statewide ballot cities, required to do an analysis. And if it ended up showing that our turnout at our municipal elections was at least, was more than 25% below the general election, then we are required to consolidate on a statewide ballot no later than June 8, the June 8, 2022 statewide general election. Staff prepared a chart, that's probably the best one to, attachment number three, which we recently revised, that shows what consolidation options the council has. We actually went from, from three options that are shown in the staff report to six. The council could conceivably, oh, I'm sorry, give one to council member, Mayor Protemeriz Mendi. The council could conceivably consolidate as soon as November 2018, or June 2018 for that matter. That is not recommended in speaking with the county. Basically, the county will be, be running the city's elections once we consolidate. As you can imagine, they are having an influx of cities consolidating, doing exactly what we're having to do this evening. They don't have the capacity for everyone to jump on in 2018. They are working on a computer-based, adding more technology to the voting process. They hope to have that system in place and time for the 2020 elections. So, for that reason, staff would recommend looking at 2020 or 2022. The chart that is before you, attachment three, if the council decides to consolidate with the November either 2020 or November 22 election, it has the result of adding on seven months to the council member's terms. Instead of a, a council member whose term normally would be up in April of 2020, instead their term would be up, for example, in, in November of 2020. If the council decides to consolidate with June, there's only two months between April and June. So, if we use 2020 as an example again, council member whose term would normally end in April of 2020, instead would end in June of 2020. So, then it's only a two-month addition to the council member's terms. We can't do, go backwards and shorten council member terms because there's actually another state law that says you can't lengthen or shorten a council member's term when you're consolidating by more than a year. So, if we were to try to shorten, we would be looking at almost two years of shortening because of, we're already in even-numbered years. So, shortening council member terms isn't an option, only lengthening, lengthening them. So, the options are for you. We are required to have a plan. The council has some time to think about this if you'd like. We're required to have a plan in place before January 1 of 2018. Staff is bringing it to you early, so it's something, if you're prepared to make a decision this evening, you can. If it's something you want to bring back to a next meeting, we can do that, too. Staff would need direction on which ballot the council would be interested in consolidating with. And staff has also attached a sample, prepared by City Attorney's Office, a sample ordinance that staff would bring back. That ordinance is essentially our plan. The ordinance would be, would, would be modified to insert the date the council's going to start the consolidation of the elections. We would forward that to Alley County. The Alley County Board of Supervisors needs to take action and can ask, actually tell us yes or no whether or not they can accommodate the consolidation when we've requested it. So, I don't know what happens after that part. If they say no, we, they say no, they say no, this item will be back before you again to come to a, a Plan B. So, just because you make a decision on, for example, June of 2020, the state, the County Board of Supervisors still needs to approve that in order to, to make it come about. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the report. If I may?
Please.
Two points of clarification. One, so we did confirm June is, is an option, correct?
Correct.
Because those are options here. That's good to see that. The second one is, if our plan is to be implemented or submitted by Jan, June 1, 2018, when is the actual implementation? Because I, I think that was a question also, and when it has to be
The plan is due by January 1, 2018.
January, okay.
We are required to consolidate or begin consolidating by no later than November 2022.
So, even if the consolidation is starting, if it's not actually complete till 2024, like the very last option, that's acceptable?
Option three and option six.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, throw this one out to public comment. I think we're going to be over three tonight. Hearing none. Not a particularly sexy issue, but, but it is a important one.
There will be some things. Once the council makes a decision and once the Board of Supervisors approves it, our city clerk will need to, there's a, there's a public notification process. I was asked that earlier by, someone called on the phone and asked me the question. There's a required mailing to all registered voters, letting them know There's a required mailing to all registered voters, letting them know what your um, the election, when the municipal election's going to occur. So, there'll be some other behind-the-scenes things that we'll have to do to actually implement this. Another question I was asked, once you consolidate, the county's going to set the the deadline for things like when we put initiatives on the ballot, when statements are due. And in my experience, cause I have been in cities with it, with um, the county running the election is um, the 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 deadline, because they need more time, because they're dealing with so many cities. We have the benefit when we have our own city clerk. We can go right up to the legal deadline. The county tends to tends to set some dates that are a little ahead of, a little earlier. So, they have more time to make sure they have everything they need. So, there's gonna be some implementation things. I'm sure at some point, the county will be reaching out to the city clerks that are consolidating to to go over all of this with them, but it's gonna be a significant change. Not only to our voters remembering when to vote, but also just to the internal city clerk operations.
And so, just for clarification, we don't have a choice. We just.
Correct.
The only choice we have is when we wanna do it.
Correct.
I think what's interesting is that we've had this discussion. Councilmember Harabedian brought up is is um is brought up by a resident of concern and and I think we had some really good discussion about this. I I will say for me personally, I'm concerned about bringing this and consolidating for a November election. If we can just imagine this past November, if we had a city council race at that time, talk about getting lost in the discussion, whether it was the forty-eight uh, measures, propositions that were there, the presidential election, everything that's going on in the state. I I am really concerned that uh issues such as city manners matters and uh city council will just get lost in that mix. So, I'm really happy to see that June is an option. It's something that I can work with. Um, and I also don't see a reason to expedite this. If we have until the twenty twenty-two to begin the consolidation, it doesn't actually, is not really effective till later on. Um, and also that us as the sitting council members really aren't necessarily impacted. So, we're not making a decision on our own personal um term and saying, oh, I get an extra two months. I get an extra six months. Not that that we're all vying for that, but I I think it's important to can, take that into consideration as we're making decision that it's not directly impacting us. So, I'm okay waiting till the twenty twenty-two and looking at June. I I'm really adamant about um avoiding a no consolidation with a November election.
That would be option six, Mayor Protem.
I like that.
I um, I do remember us having a great conversation about this and um, you know, at that time, we didn't have this, these figures in front of us and I I find these figures just really fascinating. And they really actually, I think Mayor Protem made some some great points about two thousand twenty-two. I I probably would um agree that might as well go out to two thousand twenty-two if we can because none of us would be affected personally um by that. And um, unless, of course, three of my colleagues ran for reelection, but you know, they would know that going in. But these numbers for November are just i- in a positive way are just staggering. I mean, we have amazing turnout. We have amazing turnout in November. We have in November two thousand sixteen, this past presidential election was eighty-three percent of the people who were registered voted, which I mean, is just amazing. And if you look at April versus June, it actually doesn't improve much. It did this past June, but in some ways it declines. So, if the point, and I guess adhering to the spirit of why this was passed, I think was to increase voter turnout. I I fully understand the concern about drowning out local issues. Um, I think that's why I voted against this originally. But I'll tell you, if I had this data in front of me, I probably would have been persuaded to maybe vote at that time to consolidate because I think if we could have eighty percent or even seventy percent of our residents voting on citywide elections or citywide issues, I think that they're gonna get it right. And I think that it makes it, it makes me as a future resident, not on city council, a lot more confident in the way the city will be governed. And so, if we are forced to consolidate, I would vote for November personally. And um, I think that there, of course, there's negatives to that. I think that there's going to be local issues drowned out a bit. I think that it'll be more expensive to run a local campaign. And I think that you're right, looking at uh a November ballot is just gonna get longer for residents here. But I think that residents here by the the figures, eighty-three percent showing up to vote or seventy-three percent um in November, I think they're gonna take the time to actually vote on Sierra Madre issues. I don't think that this is um something I'm overly concerned with. So, my my preference would probably be November two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, I I, just the concern I have is one you just mentioned, Councilmember Harabedian, about, I'm really concerned about the cost to run for election. I mean, you've gotta make yourself heard. You're gonna need to spend, send mailer after mailer, most of, most of which are gonna be tossed in the trash anyway. But if you, you know, I don't know how you're gonna get your message out. So, that that's a big concern to me. But you know, you make a good point. I mean, if only, I mean, the number, the numbers are staggering. I mean, June two thousand fourteen, uh, the primary election was only twenty-eight percent, you know? But I mean, our our municipal elections do better than that, but I don't know. It's a really tough one because uh it's almost like you're forcing people to vote that really didn't care enough to go and vote anyway. And that's the other thing I'm torn with, but but it's never a good thing to make it more difficult for someone to vote. But at the same time, it's really not that much trouble. If people were really interested in what was going on here, they can go vote. So, I'm gonna, I I s- I'm leaning towards uh June. You know, the option number six, just mainly because of my concern that it's it's really gonna drown out the message competing with um, you know, the president and uh, you know, national um con- you know, Congress and Senate and things like that. So, and I mean, just look at this last election, how much stuff you got in the mail. It was crazy. Now, you're gonna overlay a Sierra Madre council person in there? I would, I would not wanna be running through uh November, but I'm not going to. So, it's not my problem. It's somebody else's. But I'm gonna, I I think I wanna just stick with the, I think the June is a better option.
I actually um like option six for a different reason and I think um because our turnout is so low in June that if we had our local election, that some of those things that come up in June, we'll get more people out to vote in June.
That's true.
So, we can bump those numbers up. Personally, I got so much stuff in November that I looked at maybe none of it.
Yeah, really.
Really.
It's crazy.
And um, on a personal business note, that's the time during open enrollment. And I heard from not just my company, but other companies, because they send out their open enrollment information and it all got caught up and all of that election stuff, that so many people just tossed their 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 um open enrollment. So, it just seems like that's a really busy time and Sierra Madre is very special. And we need to have a little attention to our election and and measures. So, I would go with option six.
You guys are just too sensible for me. I I I'm, I guess I I'm a practical guy, but I'm also a teacher. I teach political science. I've been exhorting young people to go out and vote for the better part of thirty years of my life. So, when I I see numbers like these, I think I, it's fair to say I'm drooling over them. The idea that we could actually get seventy or eighty percent of our people to the polls and actually have a look at what we're talking about and actually take a look at it is just, it's too appealing to me. And I I think I articulated this the last time we discussed this and I was the odd man out. It looks like there'll be two of us on this, taking this position and I, I just wanna just make one kind of appeal on this. You know, I agree that there's a lot of stuff coming at you during these general elections, but there's also a lot of stuff coming at you during the primary elections. Do we assume that our citizens, our fellow citizens are not up to the task of reading a few extra brochures? Do we assume that that they can only handle so much? And what about the idea, every person up here has walked this city? What about that? How is that? You, I hear, well, okay, they're gonna get, the emails are gonna be important. But I don't know anybody who's had real success in elective politics in this city who hasn't really gone out there with the shoe leather. So, I I just am not persuaded that, well, I think a certain percentage, like you say, Councilmember Capoche, are gonna go when maybe they shouldn't. They're gonna vote when maybe they shouldn't have. They weren't prepared well enough. But I think others are gonna take a look at it and they're gonna, wait, hey, wait a minute. This is on the ballot too. And I think what Councilmember Harabedian said is really important because we're sitting here, how many times do we look at each other, go, what is the public really thinking on this? You know, we get zero input tonight on public comment. But if you know that seventy-five percent of the people took a view on, you know, what was, what was on the ballot, uh, you know, I think the people who are gonna be sitting there in the future are gonna have a lot more confidence when they make decisions. I know I would. Because to me, a lot of this is you're, you're trying to pe- keep people happy and do the right thing, but you're never quite sure. You know, unless it's a, one of those hot-button issues where you actually get a lot of people contacting you. So, uh, anyway, I'm 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 gonna be in favor of the uh November option.
I wanna just play off what you're saying a little bit. I mean, you bring up a really, really good point about how to get elected in this town. And you know, the tried and true, uh, you know, beat the streets with the shoe.
I saw you out there, John.
Well, yeah. And I thought, you know, I mean, that was a really good election. I mean, you were out there. I was out there. Everybody was walking the streets and talking to people. And if you think about it that way, I mean, that makes a good argument too that uh, you know, back with uh getting more people to actually go to the polling place and vote after they've heard you directly from your shoe leather as opposed to just getting bombarded with mail, you make, I think, a good point to say that you, it's it's better for our government here to be responsive to direct conversations with its candidates rather than being overwhelmed and somebody being, basically buying their way in by sending out mailers. So, you know, that that is an effective way to uh reach people and maybe that is a better way. You just, you do know that if we do it in November, that, you know, if people actually walk the streets and talk to people, then when they vote, they're going to be informed, at least about what you think, without having to rely on the mailers. So, I I can, I can be convinced that uh that's, that's a good argument.
Well, let's convince you for your original thought. Well, I, you know, again, it it is definitely impressive to see the the turnout for this last election. Eighty-three percent, I think people would just drool to be able to have those numbers. Um, I think it was the first time I saw um a line at um, at the church at at uh where where I could just walk right up at seven o'clock in the morning. You know, but going back to, I I'd like to assume that everyone is, will get educated, knowing that there's so many things. I have to say admittedly, there are some candidates for judge that I just had no idea. There was just too much. My intent is there, I think. I tried to read, but it it really does get lost. And um, you know, yes, hitting the streets, we can, we can appreciate that campaigning. But I also don't wanna discourage people to say, why should I not run? You know, when our election came up, there were four of us running. And, you know, in years past where you have eight, ten people running. And I think there should be a choice and it should be, you know, whatever your styling campaigning is, hitting the streets, I think is the most effective. Um, but I don't think that should be the only reason that we should consider the November. I think more importantly, um, it it really is making sure that our local issues are up front. And if people really are interested and they really are moved by our issues, they will come out and vote. The numbers, I know, are low um here, but I I don't think we should just go with where the numbers are, where people are showing up and assume that they're all gonna be educated um decisions that are made at at the ballot box. So, you know, I I still would like to push for the June. Um, I I am extremely concerned as to what that would do to water down our our decisions in November.
I think it's going to, just to put it more concisely, is if we, if we had it in November, it is, it it favors candidates that will knock on doors because your mailers are gonna get drowned out.
And it also favors, in my opinion, partisanship because that's when you're looking at slates. That's when you're looking at people that have the money. If you're concerned about the money piece, that's where where it is. And it it tends to be partisanship. You'll, you'll have city council members on slates that are with Assembly and County and and um, whether it's Assembly or or Senate. And that's also a concern because I think we really pride ourselves in being a nonpartisan um city council election. And I think that's important to maintain that.
And also, when you have all the national politics going on, if you're walking the streets, that's what they're gonna be asking you about. They're not gonna really be asking about Sierra Madre. It's gonna be, well, how do you feel about this candidate and how do you feel about this measure? And um, I just like to keep it kinda separate, but that's just one opinion.
No, I mean, I, I think that you're gonna get the partisanship whether you do it, to the mayor's point, June or November. You know, you're gonna have the congressional primaries. You're gonna have the assembly primaries. You're gonna have the state senate primaries. So, I I really don't know if we can get away from that. I think that comes with consolidating. Whether June or April, excuse me, June or November, I do think that it gets more partisan. It gets more expensive. I think that those are going to be some of the externalities. And to me, I've always thought, since I was a little kid, I thought that it's ridiculous that we go to the polls so many times. And I thought that voting day should always be a national holiday. I always thought that that was always the best idea. Let people off of work, let people off of school, let people go and vote. And um, this to me, the November option makes that somewhat more of a reality. I mean, I think that the extent that more and more cities are just doing November presidential years, you're gonna have a day where everyone's going to the polls for their city council members, their congressional representatives, for president. And I kinda like it. And I think that eventually we might see it, hopefully, more and more consolidation. And I get, again, the drowning out, the partisanship. I mean, I I get that. I just don't see how you avoid it with June.
Let me back you up. Let me just back you up. The, I don't know, you guys, we all went through this. Everyone here went through this. Everyone watching went through this election this year. Though, the last thing I would have talked to a city council candidate about was the presidential campaign. I I would have found that to be so refreshing to have somebody knock on my door who wasn't talking to me. I found the whole thing so distasteful. I didn't want anything to do with it. And I felt a lot of other people have felt the same way. I I'm not so sure that you're always going to get focus on the federal issues. People know what side their bread is buttered on. And they know that the city issues matter. They know the street in front of their house, the water, the police matters, and they know the federal government doesn't provide it. I'm, I'm, I feel like our our citizens are a little more sophisticated maybe than we're giving them credit for.
That's a good point.
But why don't they come to vote in April?
It's a problem all across the country. All across, all.
Honestly, because it's, it's only city elections. I mean, there are, there are the other voters who are very much interested in, you know, statewide and federal issues, so.
You know, I wanna make another argument just uh for November is is what I'm wondering too is um, I know that depending on the issues that are on the ballot, that will drive people to vote in the April elections. You know, in the past, we've created controversy in the town and it fires people up to vote. Yeah, and I, and I'm just wondering if that would be reduced a little bit by the November because it, you, it's not about getting the vote out anymore. It's just about getting the message out. And as as Councilmember Harabedian said, uh, in which I agree, is that if you get eighty percent of the people voting, they're gonna get it right if they've heard the message. So, I'm gonna lean back towards November.
I actually am kinda leaning that way too.
I I I can't, I'll just make this last. Seeing what happens at the state level and where you're looking at endorsements and where monies are coming from um PACs and unions, I I it, I really see our city election getting mixed up in that. And it's, it's really concerning. I think that I I like the idea of us not having to worry about where all that money is coming from. We're talking about the money that's going into um the campaign itself. Think about the. We're talking about the money that's going into the campaign itself. Think about the money that's coming in endorsements and the groups that are coming through. It's something that we're gonna have to face that we haven't had to face in the past. And being able to just look at the local election itself, and given, you know, Councilmember Harabedian has a point, that June's not gonna, you know, you're not going to, it's not gonna disappear from that election, but I think it's just less likely, and I just see too much of it, and I just am concerned. I would not want to be in that mix.
Mayor Protem, but that's the point I'm trying to make, is I think by this, by doing it in November, it favors the person who will knock on doors, rather than raise money and try to get their message out.
If you have a grassroots group working with you.
More grassroots.
Yes, I mean, I'm not taking away from knocking on doors, because I think that was key, that was the only key, I think, to my campaign, because nobody knew who I was. But again, when you're looking at special interests, it's there, and it will be part of our mix, more so in November than it will be in June.
Might be.
So I'm sticking to June, if I'm the only one out. I would like to hope that that last pitch might have you consider otherwise.
You know, honestly, it's, you know, both of them have their pros, both of them have their cons. And we have to choose, if we consolidate, we have to choose when we consolidate. And, you know, I don't feel strongly one way or the other, you know? I would prefer June only for the upcoming people who are running for city council. I think it would be easier to do a campaign in June than it would in November. At the same time, those candidates would get more people to vote for them in November than they would in June, so.
Let's not forget that the future council can change it if they don't like it, right?
Oh, can they?
They could, I'm sure.
Why couldn't you?
God, they'd be sick in the head.
As long, I would say as long as you stick with, obviously, June or November, and the board of supervisors approves it.
The board of supervisors would have to approve it.
They have to approve.
That would be the other thing, that so many cities now going in November, how lost would we get in the mix? What kind of?
Well, do we know what other cities are gonna do?
There wasn't that many, I mean, there weren't that many cities that had April elections, right?
No.
Well, didn't San Marino, they have November, didn't they?
I don't know about San Marino. I know South Pasadena was November, yeah.
And also in November, then would they take office in December, or would they take office in January?
Probably November. I think if it's the, if it's in November, they'll just take it the next.
The next regular meeting date.
Well, look, I'll make a formal motion, and I'll just move for option three.
Three.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Okay, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Yeah, it carries forward.
And regarding the process, you'll have another opportunity to talk about this, because staff will then return on your next agenda with that sample ordinance that's attached, because the council still needs to formally approve the ordinance. So this is gonna come back on the next agenda, so in the meantime, it'll give you time to hear input from people who didn't attend this evening but may want to give their input. So you'll have another opportunity to have this discussion.
Okay, are there any other ideas for future agenda items, future meetings?
Actually, I have one, and I don't know, so someone approached me who does work for one of the animal rescues, and apparently in Pasadena, their city council, they have, once a month, the rescue group comes and just kinda says, this is a good pet that needs to be adopted. And they were just wondering if that would be something that the city council would introduce. So I said I would ask, and we can discuss it, or we can.
They'd come to the city council meeting?
They would just come, like during public comment, and say, it was a pitcher, you know, we have this cat that's neat to hunt.
Like Antonovich does at all of his counties.
Yeah. So if that would be okay, I can reach out to the person and say yes.
Do you recommend surrender, yes?
Yeah, do you even need to, do you need to agenda?
You can either, you can either just invite the person to come during oral communications. The mayor, we do have a process of putting presentations on. The mayor approves them. We can have the mayor put a presentation on, pick, you want the first meeting or the second meeting, mayor, and we'll just have it as a standing presentation.
I would be okay with it, only if there was a reasonable time limit on it.
It was a light agenda.
It has to be like under.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's the only way, if it was just kept really quick.
So if you would put the individual in touch with me, we'll figure out when to start the presentations. That's something the mayor can put on.
Maybe we can get some cats adopted.
Okay, is there a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, folks, at 7:44.